Okay.
Welcome.
Are you ready? Meeting called R at five fifty. Can you take your call, please?
Uh, Earl Doan.
Here.
Peter. Nope. Uh, Amelia.
Emily.
Emily, sorry. Uh, Evie.
Evie.
Evie. Uh, Helise is not here. Theodore?
Here.
Okay, and Dwayne?
Yo, I'm here, by present.
Alright.
Alright, very good. Uh, we've been asked, I've been asked to bring item three up to the forefront. Let me give you a little background on this since we've had a commission. Uh, the biggest, largest effort so far went into the sustainability plan. And then we assigned each, thanks for each member to pursue. And the first time we got setback, it was because we were waiting for the intern from ASU to get the plan composed and put together. And so there wasn't much we could do until that happened. He got hijacked by then, by the then city manager to work on community development. So we just kind of waited, waited, waited. So we finally got the plan, it was beautiful, put together, submitted, approved, a few changes. And so then we moved on. Then with the collapse of council last December, we've, and so we haven't had the people from the city to sit in as liaisons. So, this is our first meeting in a year, I believe. Um, the other side of this is when we tried, or we got the bag ban passed, the state turned around and put a law in saying if you do anything that we don't like, we're gonna withhold all your funds, even though you've got the rights to them and it's still a trial. I'm looking at the massiveness of what's going on with climate change and the, uh, lack of environmental, uh, sensitivities by business and by government. I am not in a position to say whether some of it's good, some of it's bad, but I don't know if we're gonna have an impact of any type considering the magnitude of what's, it appears to be coming down our way. This was my input to the agenda item discussion and possible approval concerning the viability and value of a community sustainability commission and whether it should remain. And I just wanted to give it to each of the members for discussion and see what people's feelings are in regards to keeping the commission on.
I personally vote yes. Um, it was the first year I was on it and we stumbled and we fumbled and we started and we stopped and we didn't get a cohesive group together on certain projects. I think this year we have the background and the knowledge to really be specific and move forward with this. And I say yes, I think it's very important.
Good. So, I was hoping that our council liaison was going to be here because my question to the council member was, is the city interested? Cause my impression of the city's not interested. So...
You know, I, I, for one, I'm grateful that I'm actually able to be a hard bit on this end now instead of, you know, work, cause I don't, I'm the one who worked for the city at all. Which, uh, that's, that's another, it's a whole nother happiness in my life. However, I, I, I do, I think there are some things that we can do. Um, instead of looking at, from my standpoint, so what do you get from such a massive thing? I think there are some smaller things that we can do for the community to be sustainable. Apart from the bag man, I think there are some things, you know, like you mentioned on the, uh, on the agenda, the LED lighting, the effluent. There are some things that we can do locally that I think can have an impact locally. And that's all that's really, um, and I, and I think there's some things we can do locally and champion, you know, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna change the world, of course. But there's some things we can do, um, to kind of head us in that right direction, you know, whether it's do a little bit of research, um, or, or gather some ideas for, for some of the things that we can do here. I, I think it's, you know, most towns now of, or cities that have some sort of sustainability, that's, that is it. My company that I work for, that is our big thing. In fact, I, that's what I do for my company now to promote it, cause I'm in charge of sustainability. And there's a lot of things that we're doing that I might be able to bring to the table as far as, this is how we do it and, you know, and it's, it's small things, it's like promotion of, you know, we know we're not gonna ban those toxic bodies, right? But if we provide an alternative for people, that's, that's how you do it. You have to find viable or tolerant alternatives for people. It's not, it's, you know, we're a free country, you say you can't do this, we're gonna do it. And I, I think we have other options and, you know, from, from the one meeting I got to sit in when I worked for the city, I, this is something I'm passionate about, you know. I, I think it's something that, that I can bring some stuff to the table. And I, I think, you know, from, from that meeting, I think there's a lot of potential of things we can work on as, as a group with all of our different backgrounds.
So I will say the meeting that you came to where you worked for the city was the one time where I sort of had a feeling they didn't city care a little bit. Otherwise, it seemed like to me, it was almost like they had a, felt like they had a requirement to have a sustainability commission in, in the story.
You know, and I, I don't, you know, as, as we all know, there's been a lot of turnover. I am, I, I think there were some things that we were trying to do in the system, from the sustainability standpoint of the city, that unfortunately didn't go anywhere. And I don't know this because we didn't get the message across as, as the city. Well, there, we did try to get LED lighting here, you know, because you, that's a lot of money. It costs a lot to do the LED light, but there are ways that we can do that. Um, I think there were some things that we were working on that we probably didn't translate enough. I think if we can rework from the sustainability commission, if there's some ideas we can bring and then help get that message across, I think there's potential now, especially with the new city manager, to be able to do something, because I've, I've met with her, you know, just in public. Um, and I think she has that energy and she can translate that to, you know, if, if the council, cause that's all, I'll work with her directly and we use the council. And if we can get the council behind this, I think some of the stuff we can, we can work on. Or at least get moving in a direction that's not so divisive, I'm, I'm hoping. And I've got a little bit of energy, especially, you know, foot, you know, football's over in a few weeks, so.
I also think we should remain, um, I'm disappointed that the LED hasn't gone anywhere. Because there are companies out there that can come in and pay for it.
Can we put that on the LED topic?
Yeah.
Okay, but I mean, there are things we can do and there's things we can bring to the table for the city and show them that it's, that it can work. And, um, when they see that we've found something that can end up saving them money, which is a big thing these days, a plant will, won't cost them anything upfront. It's a win-win. Why would they not listen? Why would they not, you know, enthusiastic? But I agree Ted, I, I haven't seen much interest from the city in that.
I believe that the other directions are saying the same thing. And the, the city people put in a full day and sometimes they're under a lot of stress.
And, and there has been issue after issue after issue after issue that the city has had to deal with.
Severe issues.
Yes, and I, and I get that. And so, things get rushed aside, but, um...
Well, as I explained to the city council, a few city council people, one to some city liaisons, it's our job to save them time.
Yep.
We can come up with information and recommendations that they don't have to do research on. And that's where we need to have the city interface that we brought here. Because we can start getting the information and working with them instead of it feeling like we're just out in a wide orbit. So, I don't think we need to take a vote to continue on. But I'm glad we got everybody's feelings on the table as to where we stand and how we feel about it. So anybody else have anything bad to that? Alright, we're still gonna keep going. My, uh, term expires in January, but...
I think my term expired.
No, we just gave you another year.
I just feel like it. I don't mind it if we're gonna be working.
No, I think my term did expire while we weren't meeting.
Okay, well, do you want to stay on this?
Um, I'm actually mixed on that, partly because I don't feel like anything's happening.
Give it another year.
Well, and, and partly because I just seem to be busier than I've ever been in my life. Uh, that's not exactly why I retired, but, um, I'm busy all the time.
I hope you stick on.
Well, if there are other possibilities, I would like...
We start becoming more obese and start sending stuff up the line to, uh, council. What we need to do, we need to pick projects, we want it through the background on, bring to the table here. And then bring them up in the letter of the form to council and see where it goes. But I'm, I'm willing to work. Alright, uh, back to number one, discussion concerning Bisbee effluent. I put that in there, let me give you some background, this and LED, so I was working with, uh, Robert Smith, I mean, the city manager. And Robert was, had started the wheels turning and getting LED lights put in. And it was through, I think Siemens, and they were gonna, uh, finance it and come in and give us the plug-in wipes and everything until, uh, Robert Smith was asked to leave. I think this new city manager may, is receptive to that. I don't know where, how his own public service is gonna be as far as reducing our rates if, if we do go with LEDs. They're making about eight dollars a month for white, I think.
Right now, we're on effluent. We need to discuss effluent on number one first.
But, what I'm saying is, maybe I got off track. Uh, and on the effluent, we were talking and just starting to explore the possibility of laying out a pipeline up to the city property by the airport and running solar pumps. And then we could start, uh, we could lease land out, the city could lease land out for industrial agriculture, especially since that's now improved.
Well, you know, it's funny, it's cause over the past, you know, time, you know, six, seven months, I've done a lot of research and a lot of, you know, and looking into the trends. Uh, trends are not agriculture, they are recharge. Pima County, in fact, their large plant, uh, Rio de Janeiro is now discharged into Santa Cruz and has reestablished flow in Santa Cruz, all over the, in, even the southeast, where typically they do have more water than we do out here. It's all recharge, um, because of the, the, the other issues with agriculture. Um, once you start supplying the effluent for agriculture, then you take on the risk if somebody doesn't manage up to it. Because I've seen it before in other places, um, and I've talked to other operators and what happens is once, uh, you know, they'll get their first good crop of whatever, alfalfa, whatever it is. Well, then the second that it, uh, they don't have a good crop because of their own, or let's say a cow dies, it's never the fault of the farmer. It's always the fault of the water they use. Because, as a municipality, we have deep, we have deep pockets, we have an insurance policy. And we have all these liability policies. The trend is going a lot more towards recharge. Just becau- because also because of the, the startup, as it were, because you have to find something willing to take a risk for agriculture. And there's not, there's not the people out here who want to do it. That's, now, sure, Algo Cox where they grow wine and they're grazing there, that's different. But, um, you know, there's also, you know, I've also seen some people just talk about the golf course. Well, the golf course can't get anybody to run the thing long enough to have a good business plan, you know? That, we haven't had, the golf course hasn't ran well in years. I mean, it was supposed to be truthful, correct? You know, there's been a lot of people look into this and, and I agree with some and I agree with others. But my belief is, is probably the recharge is the better way to go right now.
Recharge doesn't...
No, it's not, it's San Pedro. Because, because then, then it's also not on the city. To recharge on site, that's another load of money the city's gonna have to get to recharge. And you forget the wastewater plant is surrounded by Freeport property. You know, so they also have a sale on what goes there because of the sulfide.
Going, going into Green Bush Draw, it still goes into water too.
But it's, it's, it's what charges better. And that's, and that's the thing that the county, that's, it's all on the county now from the agreement. Because they, we, the city agreed to, you know, set the agreement and then the county agreed to. It's all, all that now is on the county. The county has to pay for the engineering and everything else to see if it's viable. And that's...
I hope, I hope not.
Well, and that's, I, I see, I, I didn't, I disagree because, you know, I've lived out here a long time too. I've lived my entire life, other than when I was floating on a aircraft carrier in mid. You know, I've seen the river deflate too, but I don't know necessarily if that's all because of the housing in Ceravista or it's because of the mining in Conanea. Because the, the mine has grown in Conanea and there's nothing we can do about that.
True. My thoughts on that are twofold. I live in Naco and Green Bush Draw is a little miracle.
Oh yeah.
And if it's no longer there, then it's no longer there. Second.
They're also not taking, and that's another thing where people forget too, they're not taking all of our water.
They're only, we're only promising half.
If we increase the flow of the San Pedro, it will only encourage the development there.
No, I, no, I don't think so, because I don't, I, I don't think, we, I don't think there's enough water getting pumped, getting pushed from here to increase the flow that down that way. I think it's all about subsurface flow. But, I do know, cause I've seen, I've seen, I've seen the agreement, and I was the one that did the calculation on what we produce a year for the public works director here. We're only gonna give them half, which is about what we were giving Freeport during, when they were taking it for the reclamation, you know? So it's, it's like, well, we're gonna let it, give it to Freeport just to, the, the, and I don't know. I just, I know what the trends are nationally and it always seems to me that unfortunately Bisbee seems to be a little bit behind in it because...
Always is, man.
You know, and I just, I just think, I think it's, now, if, if the city came up on a bunch of money to recharge here, sure, but we don't, we don't have that. You know, and especially where we're at, that's not an easy dig.
What, what would recharge involve?
Well, there's a different, there's, you can pump it, you can percolate.
Back into the ground?
Yeah, and, and, and there, there, and that's the thing, you can evaporate, there's, there's lots of, and that's something that, you know, would have to be, you'd have to go for engineers, you'd need the money for that. And the money that the city might have for the wastewater plant should probably be reinvested right now in repairing and, and doing things to the wastewater plant to make it more sustainable for the future. Because there are things that need to get done, it's not a new plant anymore. It's, you know, it's two thousand and six, it's thirteen years old, things, you know? And that's, and if we can, that plant will last for a hundred years if you take care of it, you know? Um, that's, and that's, that's the way it is.
Where do you see effluent go now?
Green Bush Draw. Right, right, yeah, right down Naco Highway, you could actually go down and see the cro-, the crocodiles are the size of Maine lobsters.
Okay.
Down there in minnows and...
And they glow in the dark.
Um, there are...
No, it's actually a really, really, I, I went down there a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, it is, it is beautiful. And that's, because it's created, you know? And, but, and that's the thing, is like I said, is that the thing is, is that splitting that flow...
Will damage Green Bush Draw.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm, I, well, I don't, all I'm saying is, I don't know. But that's the thing, there you have Green Bush Draw and then you have the San Pedro. And that's, that's an art, I'm not gonna get in the argument which is more important. Because, you know, because I think the San Pedro, that's, the San Pedro is very important.
Absolutely.
And, and no matter, no matter what we do down here, it's not gonna change. If people are gonna, like the Benson Development thing, if people are gonna build there, they're gonna build there. There's nothing that we, nothing we're gonna do either, because they're planning on that with no flow. That's what all that stuff was done. So it doesn't matter what we do here. And then you've got Ceravista in between us that is re, they, they've got an environmental operations park that recharges through percolation and everything like that. Cause they actually had a straight, uh, strip, uh, get a more strict permit because of some things, you know, a few years ago. So you have other things in between, you have Benson, Benson's a brand new wastewater plant that's not even running because they don't, you know, they have two, they have two wastewater plants out in Benson, one of them they built for growth that never happened. So there's all these other things along the way, you know, and then, so, and that, and that's, I, from, from my standpoint and from what I've seen is, you know, recharging the rivers like that. And it's, 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 it's whatever's gonna be the most effective. And that's what, and like I said, that's, the onus now is on, uh, the county. The county has to come up with all that money for all those studies and engineering to do it. And they've got five years to do it. And I don't know if they work as fast as Bisbee does, but they might not do it.
They might not have the money.
I've got a few thoughts on all this, uh, on the recharge. Uh, as I was growing up here, the lines are in operation and the, uh, the Tailing Dam, as we call it, Tailing Pond. All the excess water was put on the south side in evaporation ponds, an idea was to evaporate. Uh, and it built up a dome of water that's got copper sulfate in it. And that's, that dome of water moved. And that was a, that kind of told me that we could recharge just using evac ponds. Just one option I made. The other, the other is I've talked to Arizona Water Company and they said that, uh, in the summertime, they'll pump about one point four million gallons of water a day to Bisbee. And in the wintertime, it's, it can get down to about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. Now, you put that into terms, and I, I'm gonna go back and get more facts and figures from it. I asked how our water levels are doing, and they said, well, just from this last winter, the wells have come up like twenty feet significantly. So just, we've got a lot of hydrologists and, uh, and people, nature studies and stuff come in and say, it takes months and years for water to get down there. Or come and says, no, it just takes a few weeks. Well, because our soil and our rock here.
And that's, that, that's there, at the wastewater plant, when they built that thing, they had a blast. That, I mean, that's, that's, that is not, that's not easy stuff out there. And it's, it's like, you know, Arizona Water does, they pump that, but that's not what ends up down there, unfortunately. I mean, it'd be great if that one million that they pump a day ended up at the wastewater plant, but it doesn't.
You know...
Cause people are watering their lungs, you know, and everything else.
But I, I would like to, you know, and if we get the figures saying, yeah, we're in this municipal county, but this is what we got extra, and then we, this is what Arizona Water Company is pumping and this is what makes it back down to the, well, that a pretty good understanding of what's going on with our water cycle and water systems.
Do you know how much goes to the water treatment plants?
Yeah, oh, today we did three, we had three hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. Right now, we're running between, you know, three fifty to three seventy. Sometimes monsoons can get up to five hundred, six hundred thousand gallons.
Are you, we're gonna put those, uh, holding ponds for drainage, uh, from street drainage?
No, that's, that, no, see, that's the thing, all, the, the water that we hit because of the rains are probably because of illegal taps and broken sewer lines that need to get fixed.
But you were talking about a, a pond area that's, that's north of it, there's...
Well, there was, and that's the thing, that was, there was a, a lagoon, there's a, uh, there was a, the lagoon from when we had lagoons for San Jose, um, that went five, four, five years ago when we started, when we started an engineering project, I was gonna upgrade the whole wastewater plant and then we lost that public works director and we got one who was not the best public works director, in my opinion. All those projects went away. We were gonna have an overflow basin there also that would protect the plant in case, let's say somebody decided to sneak in at night and dump a load of acid or something like that, or you had a meth lab flush, something like, we would've had that. We don't have that. The wastewater, the wastewater plant does not have that right now.
That meth power.
Does not have, no, no, it's, it's, it's got its treatment system, however, like an overflow basin, no. Because that project, the money was there, the project was moving, somebody thought they could get the money without a match, cause they didn't know what they were doing. And that was about four years ago. So that project and all those upgrades went away. I'm not saying, listen, there is potential, you know, and I've gotta be careful how I word this stuff.
Well, let me ask you this. Down the road, we could see evac ponds out there.
You could, you could see whatever you wanted to, whatever, whatever engineer came up with. Because that's the thing, because there's a lot of, there is a lot involved. Whether it's evac ponds, percolation ponds, there's a lot involved.
But we, we could make recommendations.
Well, you could, you could, you could say we'd like to see recharge and then I would like, I would suggest putting that in the hands of an engineer who does that type of work. Because an engineer or your company can do that work. They can say, you know, because they'll come out and they'll look at the, they'll look at the elevation and they'll look at the core samples, and there's some historical core samples from out there, you know? And the dirt hasn't changed much. And they, and then also they would talk with Freeport because of the sulfide plume. Because you have to, you have to remember, whatever is done out there on land might have an adverse effect and could possibly push the sulfide plume faster to the wells or could help prevent it moving, it just depends.
Or dilute.
It's all, and that's, and that, so that's, that's a, that's something that would have to be worked out, that's a...
Engineering, civil engineering.
Yes, yeah, and then there's, there's a lot involved there. I'm not saying, I'm, you know, engineers, the good ones can fix anything well. The, the other ones can kind of muck it up. My years dealing with...
They're dealing with both.
Yeah, I've, I've dealt with both. So, yeah, there's a lot of potential there. But at this point, we're at the point that the city has approved the contract with the county and the county's approved the contract with the city. So they have five years to make a decision.
My vision of sustainability is how we sustain ourselves if everything quits. And water is right at the top of the list.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I'm not gonna go off the rails with the other plan I'm, I'm using with Canyon, I'm gonna water. But the effluent, I think, is a backup, but we're gonna recharge, you know, we got the water down there. As long as we got the electricity and the energy to get it out of the ground, backup. Okay, anybody else have anything else for, on the topic of effluent? And can I get some suggestions as to where we wanna go with this?
I, you know, I, I think we need to just, all of us be aware of what is going on. Um, the county doesn't hide your meetings or, or whatever, you know? Um, I know, I think they just received a grant from somebody to help pay, now that they approved the contract, to pay for that, the initial payment to the city. We also need to be, from our standpoint, I think we also have to make sure that any money that does come in for whatever happens to be effluent goes back to the wastewater plant, because that's what is in the code. Anything, anything, any money made from the sale of effluent or biosolids has to be remissed by code into the wastewater plant, wastewater system.
By charter?
By charter, yeah. Well, I'd say by code for sure, charter probably, you know? I know, I know they're, sometimes they argue, but I, I do know it's in America, so...
So just stay informed.
Yeah, stay informed, you know, and, and, and do our own research, you know, and try to do, I, you know, I, I try to look at all sides. I also know that everyone has their own, um, you know, feelings towards it and sometimes it clouds. You know, and that's, that's the tough thing on this, because there's good information out there on all of it. And it's trying to find the information that agrees with me personally more, you know, from a scientific standpoint. And that's like, I, well, yeah, so I try, that's how I try to look at things, you know? I'm not saying this the right way, that's the way it works in my brain.
We know that, right? Alright, nothing else on effluent, then, uh...
Not right now.
LEDs, you're on.
Well, um, what's happening? Nothing's happening, I guess.
You know, you're right, nothing's happening. The, um, when I worked with the city, uh, Siemens, myself, Siemens, his name's Matt Vaccaro, myself and Robert, um, and APS, we had met many meetings and multiple meetings about doing an energy upgrade basically for the city. And did, wasn't just LEDs, was also going through all city buildings, upgrading the air can HVAC for more efficient units. There's gonna be a big upgrade at the plant, the wastewater plant, um, switching some pumps over to VFD controlled variable frequency drives so that they're not just on and off. And then everything kind of went the, you know, went the heck, as it were. The things we were working on, uh, it was difficult to get the, the council or some of the councils to understand the, I can't, now I can't remember the name of the funding program. There's a, there's an actual state statute on how to fund energy efficient things. Many schools uses it, many towns use it, because what happens is they take, basically, you go out and you get the money and, uh, for the, you get the price on the tire project, energy, engineering and everything else. The company makes their money because the engineering and delivery are that. That's how they make it, it's not on the lights or anything like that. And that... And that, the basically, the whole, the entire risk is on the company. Because they are by law, they have to, if it, let's say, they say this is going, the savings from the the improvements have to pay for the loan. Uh so that, you know, the loan costs fifty grand, well, if if we do all this, you're gonna save fifty over the over the term of the loan. If they don't make those terms, it's on the company to pay the city back. And that's and, you know, there were some conspiracies out there that, well, Siemens. Siemens is a very large company. They do, if you go to the wastewater plant, um all the control boxes, uh all those controllers are all Siemens. That's what they do. They're like Westinghouse or General, I mean, that's, they're a large company that does that. We were working on it and then the council just basically, you know, was changing council and it went away.
And change of program.
Yeah, now, but however, I do have, if if this is something we want to move forward with. I s- I made sure I kept Matt Vaccaro's number. I I still have all those contacts in Siemens that I could pass along. If this is something that we can convince Teresa to look into.
I I think we should do.
Yeah, I think so too.
And um I think we should look at more than just Siemens. I think we should look at a couple of different companies. Find out who they used in Phoenix, find out. I didn't find out.
Robert had been had touched.
Yeah, and they did.
So companies in Siemens came back.
Yeah, Sierra Vista is just in a currently in a upgrade. They're upgrading just like doing with saying all the city buildings.
Yeah.
And then all of the city lights.
Douglas did the two.
Except are we, we're not gonna stay here, are we?
No, but the city has this for twenty years. So there is, there is, there is potential here for.
Yeah, but I mean, if we move city operations, if they do rehab the old building or we move back there, we wanna be sure that's covered also.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But the savings, I just, when I went up to Gilbert and visited and toured what they were doing, um. They were, they were more than pleased and they, you know, they were coming out ahead and um.
I thought we were so that we were farther along with this, that we were going to put examples in Vista.
Well, that was, that was Robert's.
And that's where it stopped.
Yeah.
Can we at least?
Well, no, and that's the thing is, is, you know, I like I got Matt's number. Um and there were, there was, and there's some, some of this, see, there was something, something that was gonna happen on the Vista, I don't think had to do with this.
Uh I got the background.
Well, because, you know, there was, there was gonna be new lighting, put all of it on the Vista. That was Andy Heradix's idea. It had nothing, cause I, cause Andy had nothing to do with the LED improvements or anything like, in fact, I think he was on vacation. Or whatever you wanna call it, um when that, when when all the stuff with Siemens and everything, because I don't remember him. I I think he maybe had one meeting at the plant and said, why I want this and all of this, but, you know, that's a whole, that's another discussion. Like you can see the LED, you can see good LED lights actually at the um museum. Those new, the new lighting at the museum in Old Bisbee, that's all LED lights. And it's beautiful.
Yeah.
And 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 that's the thing, and good engineered lighting like that, because it it is, it's it's got a really nice light and it. What it does to the building is beautiful.
What was going to happen on the Vista and how can we get that?
There are two things.
Well, the Vista, the Vista was something Andy was gonna have done through APS.
There were two things that were gonna happen. One is I talked to APS, the the big guns are down here. I said, what would it take for us to put an LED light in Vista Park? And they said, a phone call from the city manager or from the mayor. That's it. And so they're the one street light out there, so we gotta go and see what LED looks like. And the other side is Andy was gonna put lights that faced into the park.
Yes.
All the way up and down the street, but that was.
Well, and you see.
The ground from late.
And and he would, he, what he wanted to do was move all of the lights out of the road into the park. And he didn't have the money to do it. There was no money. That's the thing. I'm not talking about lights, I'm talking about the work. You're talking about trenching, you know, to code.
Trenching pit.
Okay, so we don't have to do that, but.
No.
The LED, what what I liked about what I heard up there is they can angle them.
Yes.
So that it can cover, it can go like from one side of the street to the curb. You can make sure it goes eight feet into somebody's ear, but not into their window. I mean.
They're beautiful.
Yeah.
And I think we need to have some examples of that so people can come out and take a look.
And we can get a.
And then and then we can have it happen in the city.
I'd like to see LED lights put up at the washing ball court, it's not that they ran up there.
Well, and that and that's, I mean, that's, that's the thing, you can talk to APS and I think his name is Matt, right?
If it takes us a phone call.
The the really big guy.
Who's gonna talk to the new city manager and ask her to make the phone call?
That's us.
Okay, but who?
Well, well.
I can.
Okay, Earl's gonna call and.
I I gotta go meet her anyway, and threaten to break her too.
And and that's the thing, and I'll send you, I'll set, first, like I said, the only contact I have is from Siemens, is Matt Vaccaro, I can pass along. And then that way he can.
I have a contact with GE also.
Yeah, but APS said they can do it.
Well, they said, a phone call and they'll fuse it up to an LED and go see what LED light.
Okay.
And and that's, and one of the things.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be the same LED style lighting that you would get from GE, uh from 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 Siemens or GE or whoever it is.
That's okay.
Yeah, because there are different, there are different, I think, temperatures. There's a lot, there's a lot involved in LED. It's the temperatures and.
So the only thing of APS coming out and doing it, are we gonna get the ugliest one possible so that you don't like it?
Well, you know what I would do also? I would, uh Douglas, Douglas just did this, and I don't know who they use, but I think it was last year they did this. Um if you get a chance, go through Douglas at night and see what those LED lights are like. There's also going to Sierra Vista on on ninety.
Yeah, by the um hospital.
By the hospital? That, yeah.
All that whole stretch.
That's all LEDs now.
And and the thing about APS, you know, they're, if they, we're under contract for those lights.
Well, we own it. They just, we own the poles.
Yeah, we own eight hundred and something lights in Bisbee.
We own the poles and lights.
So if we're putting those lights in and it takes less electricity to run them, that's better for APS and better for the atmosphere.
What we have talked about, uh me and uh Mr. Jesus Harrow, which is the public works director, is possibly looking into when lights start going out. We can start phasing them in, not, cause we don't have, one, the money or the budget to just go all out. Unless we get money to come in.
And and what one of the issues.
Siemens will finance that.
Well, Siemens or these other companies, and that's the thing, you have to make sure that you find the right company. And you do, you wanna name like GE or Siemens. You don't want Joe Bob Lighting or something like that. You know, be- because you want a company that is established enough that if they don't come up on their promise, they have the pocketbook to pay their end.
Exactly.
And, you know, and that has a reputation, you know. GE is GE, Siemens is Siemens, they've been, both been around for a very long time. One of the issues with switching them out as you go along is the same thing, is it to get the same temperature, is it gonna be same, same light profile?
Yeah, you'd have to make sure that.
Yeah.
That's one, Sierra Vista, that's one thing. I live in Sierra Vista. Uh that's one thing that they are actually doing now. They, whenever they get one that burns out, they replace it with an LED, cause in my cul-de-sac, it's an old one. But just around the corner, there's a brand new one. And then down there, the road, it's another old one. Whenever they're changing them out, but they're, they are all the same. You just would have to make sure that you.
Up in um, it wasn't Chandler, it was Gilbert. It's Gilbert.
I thought it was Chandler.
It was Chandler, okay, it was Chandler. Um they have this one stretcher road where they've got different temperature lights and you can actually go see. You can stand under it and go, oh, my sweater's not that color.
One's pink, one's white, one's brown, and one's yellow.
I've got my notes at home, of course, but um some of them actually change colors of cars and people's skin tone and clothing. So that um if there's a crime.
That's why the prison looks orange.
There you go. Um but it changes it so that if there's a crime, police can't get an accurate description. You know, some, they'll say, oh, it was a brown car. What wasn't a brown car, it was a red car, but under this light it looks brown. And so we need something that's gonna be accurate color-wise. I think that's pretty critical.
Well, that's.
Even if we get one, it needs to be whichever tone it is that is accurate to actual color.
Why they call that?
I don't remember what they call it.
Photochromatically accurate, correct?
That sounds good.
And we're.
That'll do for us.
But I I I was shocked because the vehicle I was in was completely different. And I remember once I was in a parking lot in Tucson, indoor parking lot, and I couldn't find my car. I, it was a black car. I could not find a black car and I'm beeping and I hear my car and I said, I know I parked around here. Well, my car under those lights was a totally different color. I never would have found my car if it was just based on the color. So that's really important.
The other issue is the uh LEDs on Arizona Street. They're all red.
Yes, we are.
Been repaired.
Uh we've been waiting, cause each one of those was keyed differently. Uh and we we didn't have keys to any of them because of City Hall.
Couldn't we, well, all the keys were, couldn't we just, my, just just a question. Um couldn't we had a um um Hodges glass go over there and be key?
We we had uh Coachy Safe go in and they took them all out. We're in the process. We're waiting for um. An electric company go in and do that. But yeah, we are, we're on the pro, we're working on it.
So why did they go out?
Batteries running.
I don't know. I honestly don't know, cause I mean, they're all in, they're not connected to each other.
It is, it's probably, it's probably the batteries.
Probably, but um, yeah, they're all, they're all the same age. Um but we are in the process of getting that all fixed.
Okay, that's sustainability and that's.
It's pretty dark too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Especially with the, with the uh.
We had asked APS.
The increased activity and warrant. It'd be nice to get those lights.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Wanted APS to turn the street lights off that these, some of these are sitting underneath. Like next to the community church, there's a street light and there's LED street light. Couldn't we move some of those to darker areas and leave the street lights working where they are?
Uh we can remove, we can ask to rem- remove those ones that are over it. As far as putting new ones in, I mean, you have, you can't do, you have to put in new poles and everything.
New poles, you have to get everybody around there.
Well, not moving the LEDs to darker areas.
You want the ones on Arizona Street?
Yeah.
You you to to move a light, to put a light um around, a new light, you have to actually get the permission of the people around there. It's a, it's a big deal. You just can't go stick a light.
Yeah, but we're wasting, it's, I mean, how restart those wheels turning?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, be- because I've, I've, I've tried to get, when I worked for the city, I tried to get a light um turned back on. And it's, it takes like six months. O- obviously, it's it's a, and and especially you have to be careful, anything that was done with a grant, like Arizona Street was.
Yeah.
You have to be very careful on what you do to the things that were paid for by that grant.
That's, that's what the limit is.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think you would necessarily be able to move those. I mean, but as far as getting a light, like the actual street light, that the old one that was probably is there, still there? That's something we can look into getting removed.
I would recommend that. And then my vision is to make Bisbee green.
Yes.
And go as much, as far as we can with practical and well-engineered sustainability. And and save City Hall a bunch of money if we can. Any other talk, anybody else have anything on the LEDs? Is everybody satisfied with their discussion this evening?
Need to pursue Sierra Vista and Douglas.
Yeah.
I'll check into them.
Yeah, and and it's unfortunate because the city manager down there that pushed through that project was, doesn't no longer works here, so I'm not sure. And then the public works director retired.
Mm-hmm.
Um so APS would be the ones, um they'd have a pretty good understanding, especially, at least in there. And SSVDC is in Sierra Vista.
And when I said with APS, they seemed very receptive to it.
Yeah.
Cause I said, we wanna work in a partnership with you, not.
Every meeting we had with Siemens and APS was very productive, yeah.
Yeah, and they know what they're talking about.
What's the electrical down in Douglas?
It's APS.
Just APS, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, item four. Discussion on potential 5G mobile, mobile hazards. Did you get this long-winded form there?
Yeah, I read it.
Um I wanted to just bring it to the table so that everybody knows this could be coming down the line and it might, that ball might land in our court. Uh every who's got a background in X-ray.
Radiology?
Radiology.
Radiology technology.
You've done a little bit with radiation?
Well, well, not only just radiation, I've also repaired radar before, so.
And I've worked in radiological controls, so we've got background if this does come in the door. Uh I do not, I'm not aware, and I need to talk to either our city manager or our city attorney. If somebody comes in with a claim that there's something that's damaging and for everything we can find, there's no. No, no basis for that, like fluoride. Is the onus on them to provide the proof of the hazard? Or do we have to go out and research their claim?
So like, in what context would somebody be coming in? But they come in and say they got sick from it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So why would that even be a city issue, whether it be with the company who?
It it's usually the onus is on the utility owner, because people try to do that with smart meters locally, but it didn't work out. I mean, it had nothing to do with the city. You know, it's it's on, it's on who owns the service, whether it's the APS meter. Or the gas meter that's been smart meter for fifteen years that no one seems to even recall. Or in this case, the the owner of the tower, um or the towers, because it's, in that case, it's not even necess, you're not talking Verizon or Sprint most of the time, it's. It's a different company.
Brown.
Or or whoever, you know, be- because, you know, of of the the towers. It's usually, if there's an issue with a service, it's not the city, the city, cause the city does not regulate um cell towers. We have no authority to regulate that. That is, you're talking SEC, that's all things that we don't have any.
Um I I agree with that. Our sitting on this side of the table for many years, we caught it on on a whole lot of topics. That we had no control on, but we still caught it in here. And I don't know if that was leadership or what caused it, but it it kept coming waves. And my stand on all this is kind of an engineering stand, which is, it's where the proof, where the statistics, where, you know. And we've had these discussions where we've had experts sitting in here that's saying, the alternative is worse than what you want to do. And yet it was all emotional drama.
And and that's, it's unfortunate, but things like the 5G or I guess, what was it, four years ago, four or five years ago, the smart meter staying there at the year?
Yeah, we went to smart meter.
Yeah, all that, it's 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 all based on emotion. It's unfortunate, but people, because people don't take the time to learn the facts. About, you know, you you know, frequencies and their effects on, and because, because it's 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 a, it's not that easy to learn, and I admit it. I mean, I just, I'm lucky because I have my background in it, in it, you know, I used to run a nuclear reactor and I, you know, I. I was a certified electronics tech, I can run radar, I can do all that stuff. So, I used to, I don't know about now, you know, that's, that's all that goes, but, you know, it's unfortunate, but we, and and I don't. I've tried to talk with people rationally about different things. It doesn't, when people have their mind made up, it's just not. And honestly, I haven't done enough research on 5G because I've had my passion towards other things, you know, I'm looking, I've got, I'm trying to get. Honestly, I'm trying to renew it back. That's my thing right now. Um that's, that's what I'm involved in is because that's, you want, you wanna be, you wanna be gas free or fossil fuel free twenty years, you gotta, that's, that's what you gotta do. That's, but that's a whole nother thing. We're not gonna get a nuclear plant here. But uh, but I, so I haven't devoted the time to 5G. And even with me devoting no time to 5G, that's probably more than some people who are against or for 5G have done, you know?
But like I said, just to give you guys a heads up, the phone letter came in to the mayor, he's got like five or six more.
Yeah.
There's rumblings in the under, in the underground and we all go, shit.
Well, and and that's, it it is what it is, and what.
So what issues came to this, to came to this commission prior that weren't really city issues like this?
Well, the fluoride was a city issue because it had been mandated by the city.
Right.
Back when Noah's. Back when Noah's Ark settled, put fluoride in the water.
Right. I understand why the fluoride comes here.
But we caught it on um, the smart meters.
So what, like, what could the city even say?
But, but people need a, an outlet, and they see us as their, the city as, you know, as their Paladin fighting against the demons, you know, and that's not the way it works.
Okay.
You know, and, and so, you know, because I, I, sure, I, I do what I can to help people, but, you know, I, that's not some, you know.
So the, the city cannot say that they didn't want smart meters in town? Cause I, I thought other cities have done that.
Well, I'm sure other cities did it, in other places like California or stuff, but here, no, I, I, I don't think we have anything in our code that could have done that.
Or the state support.
Well, and that's, and that's the thing, you know, be- because, and honestly, like I said, Southwest Gas has had them here for years. Everybody's gas metering smart meters, you don't see people re-meeter anymore, so what are you gonna do? Well, make them pull them all out and put the old style ones in? You know?
But it's, those are examples of what we.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think a lot of that was the leadership we had at the time that was allowing them to go on agendas, and then people were coming in, and he was not remaining objective.
Well, and, and the, the thing is too, is like, I, okay, like the tower in Little Bisbee, I don't even think's in city limits, that's in county limits. The one on Spring, that's Spring Canyon, that's county. Um, what are, the one out there, county, the one up on New Mountains, I think, county. City has, you know, and when uh, when the, I, I don't know a whole lot of, and this is another thing there, Robert was really good, uh, Robert Smith, cause Robert Smith used to sell, he used to do cell towers in California. Once, you know, you're approved to do it, you know, it's, and that, you're approved to have the tower there, everything else is through the SEC Communications, and, and they regulate frequencies. And that's, that is something that the, the city has no say over, you know, um. Yeah, yeah, I don't think the city has any say over, I'd have to look at the code, but I don't think we have any say over on, on, on usage of frequency or anything like that.
We own, we own the.
This is the council.
We own the electric, electric poles, right, the light streetlight poles, do we own the lights on them?
On the light poles?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, everything's always, we pay APS to do the work, but yeah, pretty much.
Maintenance fee and like.
Yeah, maintenance, the lights, the.
Yeah, I'm using that as an example, with the smart meters and other things.
And, and here's another thing to that.
Oh yeah, we own all that.
Something else that Robert was gonna try, is trying to do is, he was trying to work out a way that we actually had more say in what happens on our poles. Because apparently, the law is very gray, and if someone wants to put up a five G, it's about the size of a refrigerator, or a four G wireless transmitter, there's not much, unfortunately, that the city can do about it.
On our poles?
On our poles, it's, it is, it is, it was, cause I remember him being concerned about this, that we needed to get a handle on this before it got too far.
Interesting.
You know, I don't remember the specifics of it, but it's, it is very, you know.
That's interesting, cause if we own the poles, we're gonna have some say.
But we don't own the rights?
It, it's something, and that's, like I said, I, you know.
Don't own the rights.
I, I'd have to, I'd have to get on Robert, because he was, this, these were things that he was working, because he, he came, you know, in, in between, uh, you know, he took like ten years off, and he worked just for wireless communication companies, and he learned all this stuff, so there's, I, I don't know the specifics, that's not my bag right now, like I said, I mean, other things.
That's interesting, Andy told me we didn't own any of the poles.
We, yeah, he told me the same thing.
No, we own, we own, when, when somebody knocks over a pole, we gotta figure, well, that's, okay. Let me, let me be more specific, if it is a pole with a light, and that's it, the city owns it. If it is a pole, and that's, that's, I think that's where the difference, if it's a pole with one utility, like APS and stuff, APS owns that, and there's nothing we can do about them. Now, because we own the light on the pole, however, we don't own that pole.
Well, Andy said we didn't own any of them.
Yeah, yeah.
No, he said we owned eight. And he told me what they were.
Take, take that there over the grain, it's a lot of stuff coming out of these.
Yeah, but, but that's, I, so.
This is good to know.
But, and I'm just, and I'm sorry to speak, so yes, it is, every pole with a light and that's it, the city owns.
Okay.
Uh, and that's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
And there's.
APS, Carlos.
We own eight hundred lights, not hundred poles.
Lights, not necessarily poles, correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how many poles.
It always seems that when somebody runs into a pole, it's ours and not APS's.
Of course. Of course.
Alright, does that bring uh, bring us up date on everything on the agenda?
As far as five G, the harm is not the city's responsibility as far as we.
Well, and that's, I don't, I don't, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to talk to, we'd have to a- ask our attorney, or ask the council, be, because the city, the city doesn't regulate that, we don't have to be staying on frequency usage.
Ask, tell me, ask our council.
You know, and like I said, none of the poles are in city limits. We cannot control the, unless we put a fairy tale cage around, around everybody's house, we can't control what comes through, or what, what waves come through, you know?
What you do and what they don't do.
Yeah, it is, if that's, because we're talking about radio waves, and they move at the speed of light. What are we gonna do? You know, I, I don't know, I just, if, yes, if we had a tower sitting downtown blasting on Grassy Park, that's something different, but we don't do, we don't even have that. I don't know, we'd have to, I think, I, my suggestion would, would be to reach out to our council liaison, and, and say, this is a concern that they need to deal with, because that's not something that we we don't have access to the attorney, um, but that's something, I think the attorney would have to look into, or, or should, you know? I don't know, I just it's not, I really don't know if it's on purview, you know, I, I'm more cons, and I'll talk about, I'm more concerned about other things, like, you know, how can we reduce our waste, how can we increase our recycling?
Our recycling, what are we gonna do with that?
Yeah.
We can't go there yet.
Yeah.
Should we put that on next agenda?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that, recycling.
I've heard kinds of rumors about.
I, I know what the county's doing, I just don't think the city's going there yet.
I'll wait till we.
Okay, we're, I'll, I'll text us down recommendations for future agenda items. Um.
I, I actually, I.
No discussion, but I can, I just wanna know what topics we do.
Actually, I, I do have one, um, I'd like to see by reaching out to, there's a couple other sustainability um, missions that have grown in Bisbee, one's called Solstead, I think? Some younger people who've um, really gone to zero, tried to move towards zero waste, and I also, I did, so I'm just trying to looking, seeing whatever local resources we could partner with, you know, maybe even the Science Center, there might be something there we can, you know.
Sol as in S-O-U-A.
I, can we find that?
Yeah, I, I'd like to invite them to come to our meeting, and.
Uh, Solstead Bisbee, S-O-L-S-T-A-E-A-D Bisbee. And if we do, and that's the thing, when, when we do have a next meeting set for sure, I'll, there, you know, I communicate with them on Instagram, I'll reach out to them. Just having, just, you know.
It's a formless meeting, or what they do.
Because that's the thing, is, is to get this done, we need community involvement, we don't need people, you know, screaming or about glyphosate.
They need to know what.
Yeah, we need people here.
Committees.
We, 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 yeah, we need, you know, because that's the thing, because if they're already doing something, can we partner with these other, these other organizations? Can we grab from it, you know, there's, there's a lot we can do there.
I saw a report something besides that.
Oh, yeah, because they're, they moved up to the uh.
Heavy.
Recycle.
Got it.
Recycle?
Okay, um, we're gonna, we're gonna revisit LED next week, or our next meeting, right, with whatever is discovered from uh, Sierra Vista and or Douglas?
I'll put down LEDs and bring, you know, what you find.
Yeah, and, and feedback from like, from the city manager says.
Ross, I want to invite the city manager to join us, so that we, we know what their.
And that's, and that's, yeah, I, I'd like to, honestly, at some point, um, if we could have a work session, uh, it'd be a special, or a work, where you get a little more free, you know, just discuss, you know, with the city manager, discussion of sustainability ideas with the city manager. You, that way, we're not making any decisions or anything like that, but we're, we have the opportunity to sit down and discuss. These are the things we work out, can, do you think these are viable? That way, we know where to put our energy towards.
Do we need to come up with a grant source for it?
You know, and that's, you know, and that's grants, we need to, to come up with good grants to do LEDs, you need to, the way to do it is through that program that I can't remember the name of.
Send it to me when you get it.
Yeah, well, I, I've got, like I said, I've got Matt's number, um, but I just can't remember the name of the program.
Was that the, you're talking about Siemens?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not, so that's not even a grant, that's more of a contract.
It, it's, it's a contract, and that's, it's, it's through this, it's a state funding law, you know, um, that is specifically for municipalities and educational facility, you know? Schools, governments, and, and plaza governments to pay for things, you know, because that's, we know, i- it, it's gonna cost um, one point five million, let's say, you know, one point five million to do it, well, even if you come up with a grant, you have to do a match generally. And you try to come up with a million dollar grant, that's.
We don't have that.
You can do that for specific things, like water, wastewater infrastructure, you can do that, but it won't pay for LEDs, cause we looked into that too. But that program, that, it's a, the state program, whereas the uh, pro, the, the savings pay your payment type thing. And that's, and that's how, basically, so it's basically, it's, it's, it's even for the, 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 the term.
They, they're gonna adjust it so that you get a little bit into the city coffers after you've made your payment.
Well, and that's the thing, like, if it takes, you know.
That would be really nice.
But it takes a while before you get.
And, and that's, you know, if you pay fifteen years, you pay off the thing, then the savings from the LED, then they have to come directly back to the city. But, and it's, it is a no, no lose situation, because if you pick a company that is established when, you know, if, if it doesn't match what it's supposed to, then they, they have to. Then they have to pay, and they have the money to do it, because I've, actually, I've heard that a couple small school systems have had a serious issue, because they picked the ones that said they could do it cheaper, and they didn't have the experience to do it, and.
Any other topics for the next meeting? I believe our next meeting's in December.
Yeah.
This, this right now is August's meeting.
Okay. So that would make it November?
Uh, should be out in October. Because we, we, I asked for this meeting because we didn't have anybody last, last time.
We were here.
I'm sorry.
You and I were here at seven, eight.
Yeah.
Okay, this is our August meeting. Nobody else was.
So if it's every three months, it should be November.
Oh, from now.
From now, where.
Yeah, but this is, this is not the regular, the scheduled meeting, my idea was this.
I know.
Right, but if, if the meeting was supposed to be in August, three months would be November.
November.
Correct, so are we basing it on that, or are we basing it on?
I think it was July.
The current, maybe?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think.
No, it was, our meeting was scheduled in August.
Was it really?
It was, I can't.
Cause I wasn't gonna be here. I think that last one was, I was.
Yeah, and I was still coaching.
Nonetheless, uh, we'll set up, we'll put up the request, once I get this information back in, we'll put it out in, uh, whenever we can do a work session.
Even if it's not on the agenda, can we discuss time of the meeting? My question is, can you make five thirties, or do we need to make the meeting?
Actually, if it's in November, yeah, I can, I can make it fine now.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, because like I said, we've, football's over middle October, so, yeah.
Five, five fourteen?
I was telling us at six o'clock, if you can't make it five thirty, do we need to push it till six?
Yeah, and, and like, the only way we'll be making it would be like next year, whatever, July, August, whatever they are.
During, during season?
Yeah. Especially if I can get a real one to coach it again.
Uh.
Uh, staff, 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 comments?
Yeah, we got staff, um. I don't think I have all on comments, um, we covered everything.
I'm sure glad you're here.
I'm, uh.
Thank you. So when will our next meeting be? I'd like to get it on my calendar so I don't schedule something else.
Do you have it anywhere?
Um, I don't know if I have it, let me see what she knows.
Find out, please.
At Action Idol?
Yeah, and, and if, and Matt, if you send out the notice, um, that'd be helpful, because I have Lorena blocked for my email, because she continues to send business emails.
Yeah, I, I'm sending everything out.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
She just, she doesn't seem to know my work email, and it gets frustrating.
Okay.
I just had, I had to block, I had to block my old, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it, so, yeah, I'll, um, probably, was today, Monday, I should, by the end of the week, I'll, I'll have something.
Thank you.
Or tomorrow, we'll see.
By that meeting, we should have the schedule for next year's.
And then, yeah, once we get that, then I'll reach out to the Solstead to see if they can come, you know, and then if they do, just I'll ask them to, you know, maybe we put some on agenda just for them to announce, and, you know, kind of explain like five minutes on who they, who they are, what they do.
Well, we can give them agenda, I think, go into details if you want.
Let them go for it in five minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um. Anything else? Only my staff member?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I mean, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Meeting is adjourned. Motion, I like that motion. Well, your first meeting, what do you think?
I like it, heck, I like.